Welcome to the 2021 August General Meeting, which will be filmed into Facebook. And that's the medium that you will need to access to hear what I'm about to say. Welcome to all of our members and any guests and friends who happen to be into this channel. This is a really sad meeting because we have to talk about a member who's been with the club many, many years and sadly passed away in early July when he was on his way to a committee meeting. So let me get stuck into the formalities of the meeting. I know that there's no apologies out there because everyone is champing at the bit to hear this. And I know that there are some guests because we are regularly getting new members, mostly with 504s and 404s and 403s and 505s and all number of the modern cars today. The minutes of the previous meeting have been addressed by Alan Horsley and Tim. And I thank you very much for doing that. The Business arising suggests that our speaker today was to be Blair Healy. But sadly, Blair is in Broome. And when he heard that we were having a lockdown, he stayed in Broome. And anyway, his 404 that he took to the Incas in South America is still stuck in Sydney because of the COVID-19 restrictions. So therefore, our speaker today will be a fellow called Trevor Parks, who repairs motor cars, bodywork. And he has a very big business out in Oakleigh in Victoria. But let's get on to the next one. The Secretary's report, well, Tim has said that there's really nothing to report, nothing of importance to report. So we thank you, Tim. The treasurer, Rob Cherry, has been banking money and totaling up the money to the point where we're in the black. And that's thanks to all of the people who are putting their cars on CH plates, paying $20 for the right to do that. And also the new members coming in. Plus the fact, all of our other members are up to date, which is fantastic for a club that's gone through, what is it now? Six lockdowns? Absolutely crazy. Events, trips? Well, there's plenty of trips. There's trips with Hank and there's trips with Paul. There's all sorts of trips. So have a look in the magazine and make sure that it's what you want to do. And then, of course, we have Hock and Scroungs. These are the people who are trying to sell cars, some good, some better. We won't talk about the Bunnings who are a little bit bad. And then there's the people who are wanting parts. They're wanting to buy parts, they're wanting to sell parts. So have a look in the magazine, get the most out of the magazine. There's so much in the magazine to talk. And Glenn, our editor, has done such a fantastic job of putting all of this together, heavily supported by Paul Watson and Peter Cusworth. Sadly, we can't have a raffle today. And also, we can't have a supper, except the one that you are going to have after this meeting in your own kitchen. But let's talk about the man who will be greatly missed. Neil Beddoe, lived in Cowes many years. There's a very good write-up in the August Talk magazine. And I've written something out which I will read to you parrot fashion. The loss to PCCV of Neil Beddoe will be immeasurable. He was a man who did so much for no accolades, a team player. That's what a committee member is all about. As I talk here, I can see him from the corner of my eye, sitting close to the doorway to the kitchen, ready to pounce upon the pie warmer for our supper. Neil took to everything and anything in this club with aplomb and not wanting any recognition. At every committee meeting, there was Neil after driving from Cowes to attend for an hour or two, sometimes less, sometimes more. And he always had a different car, like he had, what? A choice of 15 cars that he could drive around the place. At the Bastille Day lunch just passed, I was leaning upon the stair rail and we talked of his latest achievement in buying a Derelict 205 Cabrio in Perth with Nigel. And the seller wanted $8,000. Well, he ended up paying $800. And you should have seen the look on his face. Especially when he said that it would be an easier fix-up than the wrecked 204 cab behind the shed. And I'm sure that most people didn't know he even had that one. We also talked of the 404 Cabrio just bought. Again, he beamed, wanting it for nigh on 10 years. He will be missed sadly. Best regards, Lyle. Now, this announcement from me will probably be followed up by an announcement by other members of the club. And they will be on the Facebook page as well. Thank you. Bye-bye. Ladies and gentlemen, our guest speaker tonight is Trevor Parks. And Trevor is in the motor repair business in regards to panel work. Trevor?
Thank you. Thank you, President and committee members, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to see me. I crave your patient indulgence. I'm a better collision repairer than I am a guest speaker. It's rather nervous to be sitting in front of that many eyes with high expectations. I hope I don't disappoint you. What I've got to say, entertaining, ridiculous, controversial. And if you go to sleep, I promise to wake you up before the lights go out. Colin has given me his agenda that he wants me to work to. And I've got half an hour. I may overrun some of it, we may be short. But he asks history at the panel shop. People say to me, how long you've been in this industry? And I look at my watch and I say, six months, two days and 54 years. I'm second generation in the family business and my dad started at the end of World War II. We were called Parks Body Works, we were established in Richmond at the corner of Swan and Coppin Street in Richmond. Those may know it, it was opposite the Central Globe Hotel, Dicky Redden's best side group place in Melbourne and round the corner from 234 Coppin Street, Melbourne's first licensed brothel. Planning application was done by a lady who became a judge. The business sort of grew in leaps and bounds, we grew in leaps and bounds. And we moved with jigs, baking ovens and whatever. And we sort of outgrew our area and we bought the next property and we bought the next property. And suddenly we become de facto landlords supplemented by the income that we could earn out of the collision repair industry. Insurance companies had a dictatorial approach towards us. And I'll talk to you a bit later about insurance companies, where they said, Mr. Parks, we are your customer. This is how you want to behave and this is our expectations and this is what you will do. And my dad thought about it for one moment and he said, well, that's not the case. Because you people are really the bill-paying service. Don't get confused. You buy a policy from a man, a car owner, and it's a policy of indemnification. But that man is insured with this insurance company today. He's insured with that insurance company tomorrow. And you have no control over him, but however, he's still our customer. That's where our loyalties lie and where our support lies. We moved out of Richmond perhaps two years ago, three years ago, because of the land tax. We were paying $118,000 per year to occupy the land we have. And probably because we're not too bright with figures, call it 120 grand, that's $10,000 a month we had to pay the government to be able to open the doors. We could not simply afford it. If our earning rate is 10%, and just do a rough calculation, we're going to do 100 grands worth of knocking out dits to pay the land tax. If our earning rate is 5%, we're going to do 200 grand to make 5% to give it to the government. That's literally ludicrous and we could not afford to be there. The councils and the government want high-rise trendy cafes, that sort of things, in which we were not. Where in Richmond it was a slum area, an industrial area, and suddenly the demographics took off, the yuppies moved in. And we didn't exactly get forced out, but it didn't pay us to be in there to knock dits out of it. My position, I took over when my dad died. I've had effective control for a long, long time. I come from a commercial background. I have great interest in the trade. And I've recently been fortunate when I completed another qualification to be appointed as a Director of the VACC. There are nine Directors of the VACC and I sit on the board. I represent some of the body repair industry, or most of the body repair industry, the VACC members, of which there are 762 of us. Now, that does not account for those that are not VACC members. But we get involved in discussions with insurance companies. And insurance companies tend to ride roughshod over repairers on occasions. And some repairers deserve it and some don't. And they tend to rub roughshod over some customers. However, with the Kenneth Hain report into the banking industry, there's a thing called AFCA, keep that in mind, ladies and gentlemen, AFCA, Australian Financial Complaints Authority, where an insurance company is in fact a financial institution. Now, you can go to AFCA if you've got a legitimate complaint and AFCA will do something for you. Don't go to them with a nonsense complaint. Don't be a time waster. But get some sound advice and AFCA will take your cause up. My understanding is it costs the insurance company $5,000 to defend a claim if you are legitimate. And some claims will find in favour of you, some will find in favour of the repairer, some will find in favour of the insurance company. But there is somewhere to go to if you feel sufficiently destroyed, taken down, cheated, whatever. Interesting vehicles and celebrities I've done work for. I can't name those living for obvious reasons. And I'll tell you a couple of funny stories that comes to mind. One of which is a prominent Melbourne footballer now retired and a guy that was a prominent coach of Secilda. And at the time, Swan and Coppin was an uncontrolled intersection, there were no traffic lights. And this particular day, these two gentlemen had been in town for lunch, whatever it was. There was an accident at Swan and Coppin Street. And one of them got on TV and said, I went out for lunch with this guy and it took me six months to get home. He got like a T-bone at the intersection of Swan and Coppin Street and he ended up in the bottle shop at the pub. There's another guy, Athol Jones was his name, I can talk about him because he's deceased. There was a car out called an Isuzu Ballet, if anybody remembers that, an Isuzu Ballet. It was sold by a dealer in Becca Street. And they used to go like Sting and so did Athol. And Athol come out of the driveway having bought the new car, never crossed the tram lines and got hit. Took the front off the car and it got towed back to us. And having an Isuzu Ballet and how good it was, it was very prestigious in those days. We repaired the car, got it finished after several efforts, couldn't get past the usual routine that you hear from repairers. We eventually got it finished. And he come out of our driveway, it was a narrow gutter one facing Swan Street. He was travelling in a northern direction. And again, looked to the right to check that the oncoming traffic. He did the same thing, forgot to look to the left, didn't cross the tram lines again and got hit. And come back and said to my dad, tow it in again. So it was a very unfortunate stage of that sort of thing. We restored a 504 when 504s were something beautiful. This car was either hit in the front or hit in the rear. And the owner said, you'd better do this and you'd better do that for it. And we'd repair the front and repaired the back. And look while you're there, what about the four doors? My dad was telling me, said, yeah, paint the four doors, do that. Fix the stainless steel bumper bars, roll a couple of rims. And could you get some window tinning done? We duly did that. Money changed hands, in those days, the beer flowed pretty freely. Let's have a beer, let's have a can. And they were standing around like that. The money had changed hands. And it was a lot of money in those days. And the owner's account for the respray, plus the insurance repair at the back, insurance repair at the front, paint the four doors, the window tinning, the heavens opened up and it poured with hail. It wrote the car off. It wrote the car off. The money had changed hands, we felt sorry for the poor bugger. But it was just a sad part of life of that. As far as interesting vehicles and a bit more of celebrities, let me take you on a journey. Come with me. In 1963, President John Kennedy died, assassination. It was in Dallas, Texas, near the Book Repository. He was shot by a guy called Lee Harvey Oswald, allegedly from the Book Repository or from the Grassy Knoll. In the car behind him was Lyndon Johnson. The bullets went off, Kennedy got shot. And picture the time, ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that were born around that time. Conscription was there, the Vietnam War was there, the anti-American War was there. There was anti-American feeling. But suddenly we've had this visit from the US President. The Seventh Fleet was in town. There was a guy called Rufus Youngblood, Rufus Youngblood. He was the Chief of Security and he guarded four or five Presidents. He was the guy that in the car following the President Kennedy's convoy, threw himself over Lyndon Johnson to protect himself from the bullets. That's how devoted man he was to the security service. He subsequently guarded Lyndon Johnson, came out to Australia. And it was now 1966. And they were going to visit the Governor General, I think that was Rowan Delacour at the time. Roads were being dug up around Gratton Street. And what is Gratton Street famous for? University students. At the time, the university students had enormous political and social pressure. And they, I'm ashamed to say to you ladies, it made me feel portably in Australia. And I was only a young fella at that stage, or perhaps I wasn't even shaving. Bunnings weren't around, but they filled up plastic bags full of paint. And they hurled them at the Lincoln. They hurled them at the Lincoln. The world's press was there. Whenever the President travelled, there's a huge contingent of press that travels with him, let alone the security guards, let alone the national press. And they covered the car with red, white and blue paint. Shame when you Australia, shame to be an Australian when they did that to visiting dignitaries. Regardless of your political persuasion, regardless of whether you liked the war, you didn't, whatever. There's a picture of Rufus Youngblood covered in the paint, the guy that had protected the President. And down here somewhere, and I believe the shirt that he is wearing is in the Melbourne Museum somewhere, covered in the red paint. And there is 20 years in the Secret Service, that was the bookie rug. Now, here's what I can scrounge at the Lincoln in Gratton Street, getting covered by the paint. What a disgrace. The world is looking at us. Now somehow, someone knew somebody and the great story, it's not what you know, but somebody knew my dad, might have been a drinking mate, might have been some of his copper mates, whatever. This happened around lunchtime. The car was whisked out of sight, whisked out of the way of the press. And suddenly it ended up at our place. Suddenly it ended up at my place. We got the car, my dad got the car to clean it up. And the State Department was there, what are they going to do? Are they going to repaint this Lincoln? It's got to be ready for the parade tomorrow and whatever. And they always have a backup car with these sort of things. But they didn't have a backup car with the long running boards on it. The long running boards were where the security guards stood on the car. And they would have a jacket like this, and I'll just stand up to show you. They have a jacket like this, and this jacket used to fit me. But there was a bigger one. And under here, you'd see this much of a hand. That hand was false, that hand dangled inside the jacket. Because under here was the real arm with his hand on a machine pistol. Look like you're in any trouble, the machine pistol would do the talking. And that was the standard fare for the security agents. Anyway, now we got the thing, my dad was fairly smart and the State Department, together with the Government Department, you couldn't repaint it, you couldn't do it in time. And the thing's as long as this room, it's a monstrous car. So my dad was a pretty bright fella, he lives in heaven now. And he came up with the idea and it worked. And they cleaned the paint off. Keep in mind, it wasn't from Bunnings. So therefore, it wasn't solvent-based, it wasn't oil-based, but it was water-based. How did he remove it? Distilled water. Distilled water took the paint off. But not only to take the paint off, it did not leave water marks. The thing was a success. I don't know how much money changed hands, if money changed hands. But next day, the amount of US beer that arrived was just incredible. Cases and cases and cases of it. And there was some whiskey too. But the beer was marked on the bottle and the boxes, US consumption only. Because it's coming with the President. And whether it come off part of the Seventh Fleet, whether it come out of the President's drinking requirements. But in two days later, they come back and they wander all the empty bottles. We couldn't keep a bottle around, where'd that come from? Where'd that come from? Mr. Youngblood came out too. And one of the nicest guys you've ever met in your daddy's life. With a name like Rufus Youngblood, you think, who is he, what's he about? But he's as white as me and a lovely, lovely guy. And he's still got his false arm hanging there. No one cared to, what's under your coat, Ruthie? We didn't ask him. But that was one of the famous people that we did. My dad's also done a lot of politicians, television stars, a lot of people from the judiciary. And a lot of people that are something, who came from nothing. Because everybody drove a car. Everybody drove a car. And because we're located in Richmond, we're fairly close to Turack, South Yarra, the Hawksman, the Campbell Well, all those wealthy suburbs where a lot of people lived. Often we'd see their aides or see their people, but it was all hush, hush. Had to be done in the dark, had to be done in the quiet, whatever. And that's where I think some of the first enclosed tow trucks, when modified like furniture vans, where a car could be brought to you and it's called, for restorers, it's called like an enclosed trailer. But that was how the car was bought and taken, always under the cover of darkness. So no one could ever see what it is, who it was. I want to give you a quick, a little quick insight. I'm consciously aware of the time about what to do with car insurance. Now, I can talk to you all night about car insurance. I do not want you persuaded by television advertising. Because your insurance company takes your money 12 months in advance. That's the nature of the animal, there is no cure for that. But you don't know how good the service is until you have to complain on it. If the food's no good in the restaurant, you don't go back or you tell your friends. But insurance company has your money and you have nowhere to go. You have nowhere to go. Now, the best policy that you can ever, ever get, ladies and gentlemen, is what's called an agreed value. An agreed value. Make sure you ask your insurance company, can I have an agreed value on my car? Don't play the market value, because market value is a subjective thing. I think it's worth this, so what? I think it's worth that, can you prove it? And yes, they probably can. They've got newspaper clipping, carsales.com, magazines.com, always to suppress you. But with an agreed value policy, in the event of a car being a total loss, you know what you're going to get. You know what you can afford, you know what your payout is, and you know how your finance is going to be with it. So always look to an agreed value. Now, there are a lot of companies around that you'll say, I saved $400, isn't that good? I saved $200 for that, isn't that great? It is, we're all in a price-conscious market. But you're going to get what you pay for. Now, insurance is a grudge purchase. Everybody buys insurance because it's never going to happen to me. It's always going to happen to you. Or I consider myself a good enough driver, I won't get it insured. I'll just protect myself in case I run into a Rolls Royce. But I'll just wear the risk. But that doesn't protect you if your car gets stolen. Doesn't protect you if your car gets hit by a guy without a licence or a drunk driver or stolen car runs into you. So you've always got to make these methods to try and protect yourself. Now, going to an insurance company as a one-off person is good, but not as good as it could be. The best way to go is to use a broker. A broker knows the best avenues, the broker's got more pull and more clout with an insurance company. And before something goes wrong, well, you sent me there, you told me to go there. And the broker's probably got 100 policies to go there. He's more recognisable, more lively to be listened to with the insurance company that says it's that. Now, there's a campaign going to come out soon and that's to do with choice of repairer. Now, insurance companies nowadays, and this was started by the RACV, and there's a little box that they put down the bottom of their policy, tick the box for any repairer. It'd cost you about $80 or $90. And often the policy arrives and you give it to the wife and you pay her, you pay your credit card and you don't read the fine print. You don't know what you're going to get. So always tick the box to choice of repairer. You need to have care, charge and control over who repairs your car. We all love our cars, we're all car affectionados, that's why we're here tonight. But if your car is going to be repaired, do you want it to go to an insurance company, raffle yard, chuck shed, where everybody bids on it? Where the lowest bidder, who hasn't got any work, gets the work? You want to have some control over who repairs your car. You want to have some control over how it's repaired. You want to have some control over the parts that being used in your car. But if you don't have choice of repairer, you've subrogated your rights to the insurance company. And they are giving you minimum cover because that's all you're paid for. They don't cheat you, they always will pay. But you don't expect too much, ladies and gentlemen, because you don't get very much. So make sure you have a choice of repairer policy. Make sure you read your prospectus. Now, another thing to tell you is for younger families and the kids getting a licence for the first time, oh, look, we'll use the old man's name, put in my name, because we can get insurance for you for 700 bucks. But to put in your name, it's going to be $1,500. Every parent does that. Not a good thing because of our natural love and affection to our kids. Not a good thing to do. Don't bring your kid up as a liar or cheater and a scoundrel as the old man or mum was. Don't teach him how to lie because you will get caught. You will get caught. There was an occasion in Richmond where we had a lovely Greek kid. And had a couple of claims and the insurance company, I think it was the RACV, I'm not totally sure, it goes back a little way, decided to investigate the claim after it happened. And they wanted to talk to the policyholder together with the kid at my workshop. And they wanted to meet Dad. Dad is the policy owner and Dad's name is Spira. So the insurance man said, hey, Spira, can I see your licence? I've now got the licence. Where's the licence, Spira? I don't drive. What about the Commodore? Oh, that belongs to Con, my son. Spira's got the big wheels like this on the back of it, he's got the tinted windows, he's got the exhaust, you can put your hand up, the exhaust, it's 100mm off the ground. You start it up and it goes vroom, 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 vroom. So it was Con's car, but in Dad's name, to keep the insurance loan, mate, to keep the insurance low. The insurance company caught up with him, made him back pay it all and do the adjustment and that sort of thing. Never, pardon me, when you fill out your prospectus, never ever lie to the insurance company because you will get caught. There's no tricks that are new, there are no tricks that haven't been tried and there are no tricks that you ever think you're going to get away with. Just think about that. Just think about that. It's never me, I'll be okay. It's never me, I'll be okay, hang on a minute, please. I'll always get away with it. There was a guy, his name was Bob, and this is in more recent times. He drove a Lexus, this guy's a lovely guy, got plenty of money, had a tangle with a roundabout in Albert Park. Lodged the claim, and the insurance company was a little bit suspicious, and they said to him, sir, could we have a copy of your Vic Roads driving record? He said to me, what are you gonna do, I said, well, what can you do, you better go to Vic Roads and get it. Vic Roads come up with a driving record, and he'd forgotten, can you believe it, he'd forgotten to declare two O fives, two point O fives. Which meant that he was at the higher risk category. So I saw one of the best letters I'd ever seen written, insurance company wrote back to him and said, Dear Bob, in relation to claims so and so, and in view of the receipt of your driving records you provided us, please be advised we have reduced our liability to nil. And it cost him sixty grand. Because he forgot to declare. So be very careful that you will get up, you will get caught up with some, or, or none of these things. Collins also asked me to tell you about some of the funny stories, and then I'll get onto some of the technical stuff here, and I, as I said, I am aware of the, how we're doing for the time.
How we doing?
Um, in nineteen seventy five, my dad repaired a Falcon for a guy, his name was Vladimir Warupjow. Vladimir Warupjow is a Polish or Ukrainian guy. My dad was a very trusting soul, and he had an excess of two hundred dollars to pay. He said to my dad, I'm not sure how it is, can I take it around the block and see how it is? Didn't pay the excess, my dad said, yeah, have a right, I'm sure it's okay, no problem, whatever, off he went, we never saw him again. He's been gone for forty six years, it's the longest road test in history. So if anybody sees him, tell him to come back and pay his excess. Had another lady, Mrs Swartz was her name, um, she lived in Albert Park, lovely, lovely lady, got on very well with my dad. Uh, drove an SLC Benz, navy blue, Albert Park, uh, is seagull country. And of course she had the obligatory holiday house down at Portsy, more seagulls. Seagulls attacked the bins, come back all covered in bird droppings everywhere. And said to my dad, have a look at this, what can you do, my dad said, it's worth about six hundred bucks to clean it up, she said, that's outrageous. That's ridiculous, that is just crazy money, I won't pay that, you're robbing me, you're a cheat. And my father attempted to explain to her, it's a Benz, this is what you need to get it off, whatever she said, didn't want to know about it, off she went. She came back about two weeks later, put her arms around my dad, and they were great, mate, she's having a cry, look, I'm sorry, I've been a fool. I've insulted you, look at what I've done, come and have a look at the car. She decided to clean it off herself and she got into it with jecs. She did a great job, it cost nine thousand dollars to repaint it. And the insurance company paid for it. It was vandal damaged. These are just the stories that, 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 that you, you encounter. And there was another time in more recent times, um, and I'll set the scene if I, if I will, um, it was a Thursday afternoon, summer. And BMW convertible come in with four ladies from the Turrack South Yarra Tenant Club, they've all got the very short tennis dress. Uh, they were nut brown legs, got the little headband right that, and they looked the part, one of the ladies jumped out the car and come over and said to me, how you doing, I said, I'm pretty good, she said, is Phil's car ready, and I said, yes. And that's not his name, I've just made his name up, I said, can I have a look at it, I said, certainly. And uh, she said, looks good, she said, can I pick it up, he's coming back tomorrow from Japan. And I said, oh, no, it was a pretty substantial repair, it was forty grand on the back of a hundred thousand dollar bins. And that's relative to a ten thousand dollar or four thousand dollar repair on a ten thousand dollar Commodore. So I said, yes, look, um, no, you better not. And she pulled out the driving licence, held it up to her face, she said, is that my face, is that the same address as where the car is, and I said, it is. And she said, no, no, he's coming back tomorrow at lunchtime, I wanted to give him a surprise. And she was with two other ladies in the BMW, all off the tennis that I knew. So she was in the right, right location, she's got people that she knew, she's got photographic ID, she knows about the car, she's got the same name, she's coming back at them, so I said, lady, you can take it, so I let her take it. Probably the worst mistake I ever made, because at one o'clock that day, the cab was up out the front. Phil wanders up to drive carrying the bags like that, said, g'day mate, how you doing? Hey, good, did you have a good flight, you had to ride? Where's the car? I said, your wife took it, he jumped to the moon and back, she knocked it off in a family law dispute. How was I to ever, ever know that? Um.
Unless you have good cars.
Yeah, we'll get onto that too, yeah. Um. Two more, two more quick things and I'll talk to you about some of the technical stuff. Um, one of the worst mistakes I ever made when I, when I was young and smart. And knew more than I knew today, um, we had, and we were crazy for customer service and my dad said, can you take the blue Commodore out to the valet parking at the airport, so how do I get back, he said, on the bus will frame a walk, please yourself. So I jumped in the blue Commodore, drove it to the airport, put it in the valet parking and left it, whatever. That was all about it, came back. Didn't say a thing about it. I later found out I'd delivered the wrong Commodore to the valet parking. The guy was a professor of something at Monash University, he was on the doorsteps on Monday and said, did a great job on it, boys, but what did Shane's seats for? He didn't recognise his own car. Last one, some ordinary looking guys, rough guys, both come in with a high end a little bit from the front. Said to my dad, can you fix the front here, can you do this, and here's four hundred bucks deposit. I said, thank you very much, cash up front, that'll do us. And then they got a call a couple of days later, said, look, boy, it's there, can, can you give it a repaint? He said, yeah, sure, we'll come and see, look, no hurry, we're gonna go away fishing. Uh, we'll come back in about a month, six weeks, I said, beautiful, but money up front, got all the time, we need whatever and all the rest of it. We had this car for over a year. To find the, if suspicions got aroused and we went to the authorities about it, they were looking for the car, it'd been used in an armed robbery. So we were all over with fingerprints and whatever and changed the colour. So that's a couple of the, the funny things now, I wanna tell you a couple of the funny things that I've got here to show you, some of the technical things. These are simply blocks of pine, and you can have a look at them a little bit later, but this is the sort of grain or effect that we can do on it. And it's, there's the back of it, but we can imitate the grain, or we can stain it, give you whatever colour, we do that for steering wheels. And to match gear lever knobs, if you're doing a restoration or redo. A lot of people don't know that repairers are particularly capable of that sort of thing. Which leads me to, to a little story, there's a guy that's not, he's not too well, so he goes along to the doctor and says, what's the problem, he said, I've got this and that wrong with me, whatever, and the doctor said, look, there's not much I can do with you, but you probably need a brain transplant. And said, that's remarkable surgery, where's that gonna happen from? And he said, well, look, you go down to St Kilda Road down to the brain bank, and you select a brain, and I'll transplant it for you. And the guy said, marvellous technology, never heard of it before, so he jumps on the tram down to St Kilda Road, walks into the showroom. Young lady comes up and says, g'day, how you doing, sir, can I help you, and he said, oh, just looking. And he walks over there and the brains are in a various, in a glass showcase, and he said, where's this brain from? And she said, oh, look, that's um, that's only just come in, it belonged to a young fellow, fairly bright sort of fellow, uh, he's destined to great things. And he's got great marks, um, he's destined for big things, that brain is worth twenty thousand dollars. He said, pricey, isn't it? Said, and what about this one over here, she said, look, that used to belong to one of Melbourne's leading legal advisors, um, he was a judge. Had written a couple of books on law, very astute sort of guy, and he died suddenly, that brain is worth fifty thousand dollars. I scratched his head and said, just getting out of my depth here, now what about this one over here, that's a nice one, she said, yeah, look, you know, that, that's, that's been here for a couple of years, that, but that one's worth ninety five thousand. And the guy said, ninety five grand? She said, yes, it used to belong to a panel beater, it's never been used. Now, that was the thought of perception about us in the repair trade. Years ago, you went to the blacksmith to get your car fixed. And then we got the diversification of trade, then was specific motor mechanics, and there was specific electricians, then there was specific panel beaters. Now, panel beaters, if you think about it, are part engineers, part welders, part fabricators, part everything we do. We form, we fit, we do diagnostic, we're glass fitters, we're aluminium welders, we're aluminium shrinkers. These are the geniuses that are the unsung heroes, there are a lot of trades that are around that have not been bought, because there are not the tradesmen coming out of the school because the boys aren't there to learn. Now, some of the techniques that are around, um, is in relation to welding. Now, I'm gonna show you two pieces of metal, you come up and have a look at them a little bit later. People say they're glued together, but they're bonded, that's a bond in that. Now, if I was to do a shear pulling test on that, trying to pull it apart, keep in mind the shearing strength of one clout is half a tonne. That will tear the metal before it tears the bond, we don't say glue. A lot of cars are glued together today, glued together today. That's how it looks in its virgin state, that just doubled there to show you how it looks like. Now, if people know how badly a car can be repaired or can't be repaired, go to Google and type in John Eagle, as in eagle or bird, John Eagle collision. And people got killed because a car was wrongly repaired by a wrong repair method, is that. Some of the work we do and some of the construction work. And some of the work we have to do is body filler, god shriek, horror, whatever, and all the rest of it. This is a piece that has been rusted, that's what it looks like, that is perhaps wafer thin and that's perhaps how it should be in your car or my car, but this is what we pulled, what we pulled out of somebody else's car. It's all up here to have a look, now people are paid for it, people have done it, people have paid for it, and that's the finished product. You guys, people don't know the difference, or aren't able to tell the difference, but that's how the boy has been born. Now, here's an interesting device, this is called a filler detective, it's out of the US and it measures in Imperial. And it measures the magnetic attraction between the surface and the panel. Now, those are gonna ask me what it with aluminium, there is one that does aluminium as well. So it sends a message down via this point here, and then up here it reads on the thickness. And here's a little test panel here, if I just press that. And it's showing me green, you can see it here. And the green is as it should be, but when it gets up to the red, that's when the body filler is over a quarter inch thick. Now, we can't tell the total depth of it, but we can tell where it is over a whole panel in the location of it. And you can zero it out to be able to potentially do that. There's one that's more specific, that reaches down to one micron. There's the pinpoint on the back of it, so we can put that anywhere on a car. And this is an older model, there are better ones that have a computer program, it will do a printout. After putting a schematic drawing of the car, and it will tell you where, according to one millimetre, where the filler, plonk, 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 all over the car, and it will plot where the filler is, very handy for looking for resale, very happy for when you're doing restoration. Or when, when you're very unsure of what you got and what you bought. Yeah, that, I think I've about, about covered, about covered everything there. Um, I travel to the US as often as I can, uh, I tend to nearly, nearly every trade show that I can, oh, that's, that's an example of our work. Um, that's a sixty nine Mustang, um, that we've put scissor doors on it. As in scissors that you cut, scissors, but also the door swings in and out like a conventional car. Now, the wags that I employ call it swings both ways. The engineering in that is just absolutely phenomenal. To get it to work like that and to get it to balance, when it goes up and it doesn't tip down and hit you on the head. Is there anyone like it in Australia? And, and we use that for car shows and demonstrations and whatever. And um, we get, nobody could afford to ever have it done, the cost of labour in this country is frightfully expensive, nobody works for a bowl of rice. But hold on, that Concord underwriting have valued it at a hundred and fifty grand, whether I get that for it, but that's what they insured it for. And I can remember once when we showed it, there was a lovely young fellow come up, and he had eight hundred dollars to spend and he wanted to have his Gemini done. Needless to say, um, needless to say, that didn't happen.
Would you like to take some questions?
Yes, I'll, I'll take some questions by all means.
Are there any questions? I've got a question, true now, now, before, before you do, we, we need to try and get Alan to photograph you so that we can send this to our country people.
Okay. Neil, Trevor, uh, I've got a question regarding that agreed value.
Yes.
Uh, if the insurance company, or you decide to lift the value up above market, does that in actual fact, it pushes your premium up, so they're, they're better off, aren't they? If, if the indeed, you have an agreed value that's higher than what the average might be?
Well, first of all, there's substantiation. Uh, you've gotta be able to prove what you say and how you say it, you can't just pull something out of the air. Um, you can't just say, I've had it for a long time and the sentiment involved in it, you've gotta say why, but it costs, keep in mind, insurance companies could give you the option. Or you've gotta ask, do you get an option? What's the agreed value? But make sure that
All mine have got agreed value, but yeah.
Oh, well, if you've got it, you've got it, yeah, and are you satisfied with it, because in the event they get stolen or, or, or written off, that's the amount of money that you're gonna get. Yeah. Uh, one thing I would talk to you, something about too, is whether or not to make a claim. Now, your excess is generally six hundred and fifty, seven hundred bucks, so if it's around that figure, um, you can't claim, it forms part of your uninsured loss. But people say, look, to hell with it, it's a nine hundred dollar claim, I've gotta pay the first six hundred, I'll claim on it for three hundred dollars. Six hundred dollars, you're, this hypothetical excess, is not the, the, your finishing point, it's the starting point, because if, like all you young fellas and like me.
Where are they?
Uh, they're all here, they're all here, um, they're around the sixty five mark. And you've had an accident, and it's your fault, and particularly if you've hit a stationary object. It's the fence you backed into, it's the roundabout where you've gone up the side, it's the dump master you backed into, it's the car you didn't see, it's the parking did, whatever. Be very careful about telling the insurance company about it, oh, look, I'll just ring the insurance company and see what they have to say. Don't do that, because when you talk to the insurance company, they have a little headset and they record everything you say. And you can say, look, my name's Trevor Parks, I'm seventy six years of age and I've just backed into the dump master. Oh, did you, oh, that's no good, Mister Parks, you will, they've recorded all this, whether you've made a claim, they have recorded. So be your own best friend, don't be your own worst enemy, don't shoot yourself in the foot. So think of paying for it, the law's gonna cost you something, because your licence is the most valuable commodity at, at your rate, gentlemen. And insurance companies can, and I've seen instances, where they've asked for a medical report to say that you're fit to drive. They've asked for a report from an ophthalmologist to say that you are fit and proper to drive. Because as we get older, the eyes get a bit weaker, macular degeneration fits in, the telephone book gets smaller, your arms don't get long enough to be able to read it. So don't rush off to an insurance company unless you get some advice from somebody that knows, like a repairer. So sure enough, it's a six hundred dollar excess, and it might cost you another thousand on top of the two thousand, so what? But it's potentially kept your licence.
Is there another question out there, from anyone?
I was interested in the agreed value, most minor on agreed value I might add, and if I've got one for five thousand and just say five years later, it's probably dropped down to three thousand, but the agreed value tends to stay the same. Should, should I change it, or, or should, should the, the company, insurance company come to me and say, hey, listen, your agreed value's been this for, for six years, maybe you should change it, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, yeah, I do, but, but however, you should be on it because it's your car, it's your asset, you need to protect it.
Yeah.
Um, and conversely, if you think it, it's dropping down to some, some level, like, used car prices are all, are crazy all over the, the, the mar, the marketplace. But you might think, well, look, it was worth five thousand, it's now worth two, or I'd be happy that when I, I will go to a lesser value. Or I will go to, um, no cover, I'll cover third party only. Or I will go to, um, no cover, I'll cover third party only.
Sure, but if I leave it on that value and nobody says anything, and it gets enough, I'll still be paid that value.
It is what it is, less your excess, yes it is.
They've agreed to that value.
Yes, it is, yes, that's what you get, yeah, less your excess, less your excess, yeah.
All right, well, if there's no one else to, oh, Brian.
Yes, um, you've got to be quick, Brian. If uh, you're doing as you say and not wanting to tell the insurance company about uh, your stupidity of backing into. Garage brick wall or something, and you pay for the, the repair yourself. Is that one of the things you are supposed to disclose to the company? Or are you only supposed to disclose claims that you've made?
Well, you can't disclose a claim that hasn't happened.
True.
Uh, and that's it, be your own best friend, not your own worst enemy.
They're not gonna be able to find other evidence that has happened.
No, no, you haven't told anybody, yeah.
Why would they want to? You fixed it yourself.
Yeah, 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 it's an owner pay, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Trevor, I think it's been most informative.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much for coming and spending the time. Uh, it's a pity that Colin couldn't be here, but as you've heard, he's uh, incommunicado, watching the pines on Manly Corser. So thank you very much indeed.
Okay, thank you.
And uh, the reason that we've got Trevor is because Paul Watson had some work to be done on his four O three. And he found Trevor, not sure where he found it, but he found it and he was most impressed.
Yeah, well, I can talk about that point down eventually. The, the insurance company on that, um, wanted to write the car off. They wanted to say, no, there's little or no value in it, it's got to be written off, and there's sentiment in it, and Paul's a lovely guy, as you know. Um, the car had to be saved, um, we didn't work miracles, uh, but we did know the law. Um, and we did go to bat for Paul. I said, Paul, can I get your position? From you to deal with the insurance company, let me be you, I'll deal with them. And they know that sometimes I can be formidable, sometimes I can be objectional, but we're there for an aim, we're there for a purpose, we're there for a journey. How we get there is my business, but we saved Paul's car, um, we took the insurance company on, um. And uh, it, it wasn't easy, but it was fun, but we got there, but the ultimate thing is, we got a job out of it, we're happy about that. Paul's kept his treasure, Paul's kept his car. Now, think about it, our cars are our baby, no matter how old they are or this or whatever, someone says, I'm gonna take that car away from you. No, but there's sentiment involved in it, I'm gonna take five grand or ten grand out of my bank to get it repaired.
Did you have agreed value?
I can't remember to tell you the truth. Yeah, look. I look, I'm, I'm not sure, I can't say yes, I can't, can't say no, but, but it wa, it was a battle, because they wanted to accelerate it towards certain things. And uh, you know, um.
Still have salvage rights, wouldn't he?
Oh, undoubtedly, yeah, well, well, you mean retention or salvage rights?
Well, yeah, retention's.
Well, we're, that's a different thing, because the insurance company will play the unders and overs game. They'll inflate one and deflate the other, it's a bit like when you buy a car, we'll increase the trade in for you, we'll give you this for your trade in, isn't that nice? But you're paying for the other in. But however, what you're talking now about is retention of salvage, that's another issue again. Now, some of the bigger. Multi, uh, smart insurance companies lay your attention, and, and one of which I think is famous, Rhino Insurance does it. Shannon's does it, and Lumley Special Vehicles. But these are things you need to ask. Don't go in head down bum up, think my insurance company would look after me, forget it. Because I've been the club number forty years, they know me, they love me. Well, my insurance company's got four initials and you all know who they are. They can look after me. They are not. They don't love you when you have a claim, you cost them money. So in any business, whatever you do, whether you're selling chocolates or cars, how many did you sell today? I sold twenty, I sold thirty. Can you sell forty? Can you sell fifty? Can you sell one more? It's on an incremental basis. Now, with an insurance company, the assessor has control of the checkbook. The assessor goes out and spends the money from the insurance company. And if he goes to ten repairers and spends ten grand, that's a hundred grand he spent. So his boss says to him, how'd you go today? I sold ten cars, spent ten grand, good. Can you go out tomorrow and spend ninety? It's on a decremental basis, it's on a reductive basis. Because the insurance company gets your money twelve months in advance, on the short term money market, into business, into capital expenses. Into the share market, various investment portfolios, have a drive down St. Kilda Road, Burke Street, Collin Street, who owns all the big buildings? Not the panel beaters.
Which brings us back to Brian's, makes you wonder why you do panel beating.
Uh, sometimes I wonder too, yeah.
It's interesting the way the insurance companies do work, my partner's car was written off. And had just paid the registration, and I said, oh, I'll take the plates back off, and they said, no, it's our car now, we keep the registration. So that was seven hundred dollars.
And who lost? You did.
Oh, no, 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 but they said, oh, I said, can I buy the car back the wreck? And I said, yeah, you can have the wreck for two hundred and fifty. So I bought the wreck for two hundred and fifty and it came with the registration, and so I handed the registration, and so I made money out of it.
Well, you, you're lucky and smart for do that, but had, had you had, and a great word called if, a guy called Rudyard Kipning. Kipling wrote a mon, wrote a lot of money, wrote a poem called If. If you've been smart enough to cancel the registration from then, but you don't know what you know then, as far as the total loss is concerned. But if you had those anticipatory powers to say, well, I'll cancel it here, then they might have repaired it, then you're back in the same property. Now, now, one last thing to tell you about, is, is a lot of the modern cars out, have got a thing on it called ADAS. Anybody heard of ADAS? Advanced Driver Assistance, Advanced Driver Assistance. Lot on Subarus, lot on Volvos, lot on the modern cars. The great feature, great feature, but when something goes wrong. Say for example, you smash the mirror off a Volvo, or you smash the windscreen on a Subaru, you must replace it with Subaru glass. Because the camera reads through the glass, that's got a certain millimetre range. Where it alerts to the car in front, or it activates the safety braking system. And if it's not right, when you plug it in, it doesn't work. So you can often say, well, I'll replace the windscreen, but you've got to get the ADAS reset. And the ADAS can cost anywhere between five hundred and a thousand bucks. Now, imagine that saying to a bloke, we've done a dent in your bumper bar, mister, it cost you six hundred bucks or five hundred bucks, we've got another thousand off for that. People think you're crazy. But for lane divergence, pedestrian warning. Um, the go to sleep big bit, wake up, you're awake, all those things are there to prevent accidents. And that's a great thing, because we don't, we don't fix many cars for dead people.